Yes, it will be chief.
I was in the high school today. It's really weird right now.
There's a, I'll tell you what, I'll reach out to you later this week. We'll chat.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
What do you think is gonna be Friday night?
As far as I know, it's Friday night at seven at this moment.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, chief.
Sneaking in under the wire, I think. A minute to go.
At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for November ninth, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Deaton, Councilmember Kurzweil reached out to me earlier today and she said at the very least she was gonna be late and she may not be able to make it at all. So at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Kurzweil this evening. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you. I'll move to excuse Councilmember Kurzweil.
I'll support.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from October twenty-six, 2020. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll, I'll move the minutes.
Second.
I'll support.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll move the bills.
I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the agenda.
I'm, I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Tonight's consent agenda has the Kiwanis Christmas tree sale. Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please virtually raise your hand or speak up to be recognized. City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone looking to take part in our public comment this evening?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. We will close our public comment and move on to the discussion of the downtown. And Nate, you go ahead and take the lead on that.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So we're continuing to work for, with the applicant regarding the tax abatement at three oh two South Lafayette Street in downtown, which is the Marathon Gas Station. I've requested additional documentation from them for their project. I want to remind everyone again that the first of two DDA annual meetings will be taking place this Thursday. It'll begin approximately around nine or nine thirty. The second meeting is gonna be next Thursday, November nineteenth, from six thirty to seven thirty PM, and both of those will be over Zoom. Since the last meeting, I attended the Cultural Arts Commission meeting and we discussed the three ninety South Lafayette proposal that we had talked about at the city council's last meeting. They, they had a lot of good ideas. They proposed maybe like a sculpture park or an art park and they had a couple of sketches that they had drawn up, you know, with places for people to sit. And then they were thinking about approaching Jeff Heinand in about possibly putting a mural on the side of his building to kind of add more vibrancy to that space. Last week, I was informed that South Lion DDA was successful in its grant application for the mural on the side of the Grand Trunk Building. We were awarded five hundred dollars for the project, which we asked for a thousand, but five hundred is, is great. We're looking at the spring of twenty twenty-one for the, for that project to begin. I've spoken with Susan Stowe and she said the artist that she has in mind for the project wouldn't be able to do anything until, until the, until the fall and we don't have anything budgeted this year for it. So it kind of works out the best that way. The farmer's market wrapped up on Halloween, despite all the challenges and everything that went on throughout the course of the season with COVID and everything else like that. The, the market was successful, customer and vendor attendance was strong and I want to thank Tim David's for his hard work over the market season. We had the winners of the downtown scarecrow contest. There were a total of eighteen scarecrows put up, which was, which was cool to see. I went around and took pictures of all of them. And then the three winners were the Lion Theater, Active Faith, and the Dance Center. So if you see any of those, if they're still up, make sure you go and look at them. Let's see here. And then at the end of last week on Friday, it was announced that the Show Your Love For Lion campaign was awarded the best marketing and promotions project for communities with populations over ten thousand people. So that, that was pretty cool to, to get that recognition. We competed against cities like Dearborn, Ferndale, and Marquette. And so we were chosen from those communities for our work, so. Very happy to receive that award. It's pretty cool. And that's, that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Well, thank you, Nate. That's incredible to hear about our, our friends that have been involved with the Love For Lion campaign. I know some of you are amongst us this evening, so thank you. Does anyone have anything for Nate tonight?
Yeah, I got a question.
Councilmember Richards, just one moment. I'm gonna go to Councilmember Kennedy first.
So Nate, we distributed the, the funds to sixteen of eighteen businesses from the patricity campaign. We had talked about taking pictures when you distributed checks to those businesses. Did we take pictures of them and have we posted them? I haven't seen them posted anywhere.
I've taken pictures. I'm still trying to get one picture. I haven't, there's one business that I haven't been able to get a hold of and they haven't really been in their place of business during business hours. So I need to get one more picture, but I think at this point, we can probably just go ahead and post those pictures online.
Yeah, that'd be great. I just let, you know, so that the, the residents know that the, the city was there, you know, plug and away, trying to help some of those businesses and it did come through, at least sixteen of them there anyhow.
Yep.
That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mack, this is Councilman Richards. Question regarding the progress or update on one ten Detroit Street, which is definitely in the downtown. I believe it was in the last previous meeting, you mentioned that the tree had been taken down. I've noticed it. Yeah, sure. It's beautiful. It's glad, glad to have it gone. Do you happen to have any knowledge about who did that or did our DPW wind up doing it?
I believe the property owner had the tree taken down. We had a, a hearing regarding the dangerous building or, building ordinance with the property owner in October. They indicated to us that they were going to be demolishing the property and we're, we're gonna be in, in contact with them regarding what they're doing because it was supposed to, their application was supposed to be submitted by the end of October and we have not received anything yet, so we're following up with them on, on what exactly is going on.
Well, okay, I just wondered if they made a fifty fifty agreement like we do for sidewalks, but taking the tree down because it was in a, it was hanging over our alley. And I just wondered if that, if that went on. As far as demolishing the building, I got some thoughts on that. I'll share with you later on this week if we can get together. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kittle, did you still have something?
I was just curious, the, the idea of the Marathon Station and the abatement has come up a couple of times. I'm surprised that that would even come close to qualifying for us to give relief. Am I missing something?
Well, in the guidelines that I've gone through, it says properties that are investing anywhere from zero to four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars can apply for up to two years of an abatement.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Typically, if we grant somebody an abatement, there's some residual effect and improvement and benefit to the city for doing so. Typically, what happens is they're, they're fixing up a, an abandoned building like the guy's doing with the RCA that's gonna bring a, a new business into the city, gonna provide increased revenue in the city, increase customers for the city and so forth, you know, could be new, new people moving to the city, buying homes and so, and so on. This, this request here would be similar to me deciding to paint my house and asking for a reduction in my taxes. I mean, he's just basically improving his business. There's no increase in benefit to the city as a result of having him do that. There's no additional traffic coming to the city. Nobody's gonna be driving to the city to visit the gas station just because he improved the facade. So that's the question that really comes to mind when you want to grant a tax abatement. It's more than just the investment in the dollars. It's the residual effect that's also benefiting the, the city. So ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Does anyone else have anything for Nate? Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Well, just on that whole subject, those are arguments that we could end up talking about during the course of discussion about that. I just, I didn't think that the window was as low as four ninety-nine. So for somebody to be able to get in the door at all, so.
Yeah, you know, we have the program out there. They can apply for it if council feels that it's not, you know, not the right, the right course of action and then they can, they can determine that.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I got something here.
Go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
Uh, Mr. Mack, before you were here, just to reiterate, the Providence Clinic, okay? Before it was, or maybe it was just after it just started being ascension, they had a project that went on for three years of improvements that amounted to half a million dollars. And they never applied for a, an, a tax abatement, okay? Through, through any system. So we, we do have improvements to our city going on and it's wonderful that we do. Where the Marathon Gas Station is concerned, he wasn't aware of it. I made him aware of it. And maybe I'm at fault. I should have spoken up earlier, but I got him going on that and, and his, his timeline is over a year and a half in the future still. He's doing it slowly and he's accomplishing quite a lot, so it seems to me. And he's gotten a grant to be a, a emergency station. If the power's shut off anywhere in the city for an extended period of time through emergency or something, he can't be shut down. He's got to be guaranteed gas and oil and services in case of an emergency. I think that's a benefit to the city, but it hopefully would never have that big of an emergency. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Dill?
I was just gonna suggest that we wait on this kind of a discussion until we actually have it in front of us. It seems out of place.
Certainly. Anyone else have anything for Nate this evening? Thanks, Nate. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the fire chief report and Chief Vogel.
Good evening. Um, some bad news on the ladder truck. It's going out of service again this week. The onboard generator seized, had a small fire. So it's gonna be going to the manufacturer this week. Hopefully it's just out for a short time. Just wanna take it real quick and remind citizens that there is no burning of leaves in the city. We're a small town where we live close to each other. If you have a fire with leaves, the smoke affects everybody. I know this is, we're not Green Oak, we're not Lion Township. We don't get burnt permits. I know it causes some stress on people when we tell them they can't, but just a reminder, it's in the charter. Go to my website, southlinefire.com. We've got details on the burning. We've had a couple incidents recently and it just, it just stresses everybody out. Finally, the smoke detector program has really taken off. We've done another additional ten service calls this week. It's been really, really positive. However, I need smoke detectors. I'm asking, I wrote letters to Home Depot, Lowe's. If anybody can donate one or two smoke detectors. If you ever said to yourself, what can I do for my local fire department? We would love to have a ten-year battery smoke detector. Just by us one, by two, we used to charge one or two smoke detectors and take a CPR class, but unfortunately, we've had to put a stop to all trainings because of COVID. We would, so I'm, I'm asking, I've been writing for grants. I've been desperately looking for smoke detectors. And then finally, my life has become COVID again. It's just everything I do, Zoom meetings. I got a big Zoom meeting with the state tomorrow to kind of get a state of the, where the state's at and where we're going. And I will update everybody on Friday when I know more. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Kennedy, just one moment. I want to thank you for the reminder to our friends in the community about burning their leaves. Some years, it seems like it pops up more than others, but I, I can imagine that this would be one of those years. So thank you.
Yeah, the great weather, kind of, everyone around us can do it.
Yeah.
And, and I always tell people, well, when you, you know, some people in Green Oak live on three acres.
Right.
We live on small lots. And by having, by burning leaves, recently, we had four different neighbors all calling saying they can't breathe. And it's just a small reminder that we're a small town and it affects everybody, so.
Yep. No, thank you. Great reminder and I will be sure to, to share that with as many as I can as well. Councilmember Kennedy and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. Chief, congratulations on the, the grant for the purchase of the second Lucas device. That was, that was great news on that. And secondly, mentioning that you're looking for donations from like Lowe's and so forth, is Nate Mack still on this call?
Yes.
Okay, so Nate, I gave you the name of somebody from Lowe's that was looking to make a donation to the city a few weeks ago and then you talked to her and I don't know that anything ever came of that, but this might be worth circling back and talking to that individual. I saw that they made a donation to the Lion Township Fire Department just recently. So maybe you can touch base with them and see if they'd be willing to make a, a donation to our fire department in the form of those smoke detectors that Chief has just asked for.
I can relate.
So, you know, rather than just letting that, that offer fall by the wayside, maybe we can get something out of it. I appreciate it, Nate. Thanks.
Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I'm just wondering if one wanted to make a donation. Do you want actual fire detectors, smoke detectors, or do you want cash? What would be better?
We don't, we, we're not very good with cash, right? We're just a fire department. If, if somebody would be grateful to buy me a smoke detector, you go to Peters, Martin's, Great Lakes Aces, just buy a ten-year smoke detector, you can drop it off, we can thank you, or you can do it anonymously, we'd be, we'd be grateful. I'm, I'm using a high rate of smoke detectors. And it's not just Colonial Acres. It's kind of branched out that we're, and it's, it's fascinating to me that we're hitting some, these are truly people that needed them. And we're grateful to do it. We like doing it, but it's putting a slight stress on us. We, you, when I, when we got two hundred and fifty of them a couple of years ago from the state of Michigan, I thought we'd have them forever. But no, we've, I've had to make a purchase of Amazon Purchase Forum and, and it just, it's just tough on a budget.
Right.
It is ours, that's so. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Great suggestion there, Councilmember Walton, and thanks for clarifying, Chief. I'm sure some of our great citizens will answer the call for that. Does anyone else have anything for Chief Vogel this evening? All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, everybody.
We'll move over to the police chief report and Chief Sobek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple of things this evening. Halloween was a success, although we didn't see the numbers that we have seen in the years past. Somehow, we were still able to give away all of our candy and we had no complaints, so. No formal complaints, no nothing from Halloween. It was, it was a good event for us. Get back some type of normalcy, even though we didn't see the numbers, but whoever's a good event. Policing, the polling stations, police had a heavy presence during that time. We had some no issue. We were anticipating a lot of different things that could have happened, but things were very, very peaceful and calm at all of our polling stations. We had officers stationed there throughout the day, just to handle any situation that may or may arise, but we didn't have any issues. Lisa Deaton, want to thank you and your staff for all that you did to put that together and get there ready to go and the prep and everything that goes into it, and the long hours, everything. So we appreciate what, what you and your staff have done for the election and we're just glad that we're past it now. So just want to give you a shout out. Our new officer is going to be starting Joseph Chapsky. He's coming from Burton PD. He's a five-year veteran. He will be starting with us November seventeenth, so we're looking forward to getting him going. And we are participating this year in Wigs For Kids. It's basically kind of like a No Shave November where you will see some of our officers donning some facial hair for a contribution, a monetary contribution that they make. These wigs for kids, we've been participating, this is the third year now, so we really do want to, there's a link on our Facebook page as well, if you want to contribute, five oh one three C. It's, what they do is provide money and funds to give these young kids who are suffering from diseases that, with hair loss, you know, such as cancer and other things, it provides a, a new sense of pride for them with, with getting, providing them with a new wig. So South Lion PD, as many other areas will be involved in that as well. So if you'd like to make a donation, you can stop by the station or go onto our Facebook page and, and drop some money there. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Sobek. Does anyone have anything for Chief tonight? Councilmember Kittle, go ahead. Oh, Councilmember Richards, just a moment. Councilmember Kittle, you're muted.
Still.
I'm sorry, Chief. I, I didn't hear when the, the end of the contributions for that are going to be.
Uh, always through the month of November.
November, okay. Great, thank you.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Uh, Chief, I've given out the new phone number to different people that didn't have a number to call in, which I got from Lieutenant Baki. And I just wanted to know if you could give us an update on the tentative improvements to your phone system that have been sort of a problem for a long time here now. Thank you.
Uh, the, the one number that we had posted on the Facebook page, for some reason, that just died. We've been working with NOVIPD and trying to figure that out. So we do have a new phone number that's posted on our Facebook page, two four eight, three four seven, zero nine one one. We'll go directly to NOVIPD until we get our issues straightened out. I have another conference call. Paul and I have a meeting with Comcast tomorrow to see what new changes have to be made as far as installing the CAT five lines to the phone. So we're, we're gonna continue to keep on pushing Comcast forward to see what we can do and get this thing in as soon as possible. It's gotten to a point where, you know, there's, it's always one thing or another. It's, it's breaking down and we have to make adjustments. So hopefully that'll be installed by sometime in mid-December. We're hoping if there's no other, you know, glitches in our, in our plans, but I'll, I'll provide an update once we get one from Comcast.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone else have anything for Chief tonight? Thanks, Chief Sobek. With that, we will move on to old business number one, Fieldstone Plan Development, rezoning and final site PD plan approval. And I believe Ms. McIntyre is gonna take the lead on this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this evening, you are reviewing Fieldstone Plan Development, which is a fifty-unit detached, single-family residential development on an eleven point six-five acre parcel of land on the south side of Eleven Mile. Quick background, the property is irregular in shape, currently accessed from an unpaved portion of Eleven Mile. It is adjacent to Colonial Acres to the west and north and is bordered by the railroad on its western boundary. The applicant has chosen to use the plan development option from the city zoning ordinance to develop the property. The plan development process has four stages. During stages one and two, a public hearing is conducted by the planning commission and then city council takes action on a rezoning, which would be a first reading, and the approval of the preliminary plan development site plan. In stage three, the planning commission reviews the final site plan and makes a recommendation to council. And stage four, which is where we are today, is a second reading of the rezoning and a final site plan approval and review. On June twenty-second this year, the council did its first reading of the rezoning of the property, rezoning it from multiple family RM1 to plan development PD and approved the preliminary plan development site plan. The preliminary site plan locks in and approves the layout of the development and this includes the road circulation, the utilities, the number of housing units, the minimum unit acreage or square footage, lot sizes, the setbacks. We also have them illustrate the buildability of the lots by showing the building envelope and, if possible, building footprints. The June preliminary site plan approval included a list of conditions and waivers that addressed lot size, lot width, lot coverage, to name a few, that were accepted and approved as part of the preliminary site plan approval. These conditions are part of the plan development agreement between the developer and the city, which you have a copy of in your packet this evening. This evening, you are going to do a second reading of the rezoning and take final action on the final site plan. The rezoning and the site plan are tied together. The final site plan typically includes engineering details, landscaping, recreation, open space. More details about that, house plans, elevations, and color for houses. A majority of these items were actually reviewed and addressed during the preliminary review, specifically the house plans. They were obviously looked at again. On September twenty-fourth, the planning commission recommended approval of the plan development final site plan with conditions. Now, these conditions have been addressed in the plans that are before you this evening. They were minor details for some calculations for landscaping or a note, missing note here and there. Those have all been completed and are on the site plans that you have with you this evening. The result is a complete site plan with no outstanding zoning issues at all. Lastly, as part of the final site plan and stage four, a plan development agreement, a master deed, and an association bylaws are required to be submitted and approved by the council. These documents have been reviewed, edited, and updated based on feedback from and discussion with the planning commission, with the developer's attorney, the city attorney, and city staff and consultants. This agreement requires city council approval. I have provided this in your packet this evening, what you have before you, but you will actually not be acting on this until a subsequent meeting, should you approve the plans and rezoning this evening. There are a few, just a couple typos we want to address, but more importantly, the exhibits, which include the final site plan, reference tables, documents that need to be included in the agreement. We would like to present those all together as a package for you with your approval at a subsequent meeting. Based on our review of the plans and the documents, I recommend an approval of the second reading of the ordinance to amend the Based on our review of the plans and the documents, um, I recommending approval of the second reading of the ordinance to amend the zoning map to rezone this parcel from RM1, multiple-family to Plan Development PD. Also recommending approval of the final site plan, uh, for final site plan approval, based upon the following, that approval of the rezoning from RM1 to PD be approved. The plan development agreement, the master deed and association bylaws be approved and recorded by the city. And finally, that all necessary permits from the Road Commission of Oakland County, Eagle and other departments and agencies, um, be obtained. I am happy to answer any questions you have, I know that the developer, um, have a representation here this evening, um, and may have um, some extra information to provide.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I just had two things, there was, uh, a reference in there from Mr. Lanham had asked about the condition for the wall that was all siding. That was supposed to have been written into the conditions, I didn't, I didn't run across that, had that taken place?
Yes, um, let me see here. Um, if you look at my, let's see, okay, if you look at the agenda note, page two, um, it says final plan development site plan dated July thirty-first. Actually, if you go down and look at number twelve, that is the specific item where it says Wayne's coating to be used on units twenty-seven and twenty-eight side elevations. Those are the particular buildings that they did not want to have blank, um, just complete siding on, so that is addressed, number twelve.
All right, uh, thank you. And the other concern had been there, the, uh, anti-monotony language. Now, I got kind of mixed readings when I read the developers. Hit their comments had reflected the fact that all the communities that they typically are working in use the same language that they've got. And it seemed as though ours was a little bit, a little bit more stringent than what they were suggesting. And I wanted to find out, because I think there was a, a matter of the same brick or colors or something like that shouldn't end up being considered, uh, excuse me, different colors with the same floor plan and elevation shouldn't end up triggering the anti-monotony language, is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate, um, the planning commission had some discussions, they thought, um, that, um, well, actually what I did is I showed them some plan development agreements from other developments within the city. Um, they thought that, um, that those had been more restrictive than they are. What we are looking at here in this development agreement is consistent with, for instance, the Knowles. Um, and so they, um, got some, they discussed it, and actually the applicant then was able to provide us with clarification, which even further, um, defines what is considered, um, a separate, you know, a separate, um, facade colors, um, those things, so that we do not have, you know, monotony, so. They did provide additional language and it is included in the, um, plan development, um, agreement.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
The, uh, the one question I had, and I appreciate Kelly, uh, identifying it for me, was, uh, making sure that the, the streets are never dedicated nor become the responsibility of the city. And, uh, we talked about that back in June, and that has been incorporated into the, uh, homeowner's agreement that's been provided, so I appreciate you, uh, pointing that out for me, Kelly, glad to see it's in there, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I, I, I forgot, I wanted to make some mention about the private road construction. Um, so how much relief from meeting what our spec for city street would be? I just don't want to find out twenty years from now, the whole thing is discombobulating and, uh, you know, we've got a bunch of residents that are wondering why we didn't protect them from the developer not putting in a robust road.
No relief, they are required to be built to our engineering standards, which are city standards for public roads. So they will be meeting that, um, they will just ma, be maintained as private roads, but they will meet public engineering standards.
I'm glad to hear that, there was, because the language spoke to the idea that it would be a private road, and I'm thinking, are they able to miss a step or two in here, so, all right, thank you.
Yeah, there, there's many, many pages in this large site plan, which you only got abbreviated version of with engineering standards and cut sheets and cross-sections of the, the pavement, and it's, yes, it definitely meets, um, the city standards for public road.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Kelly, are we looking to, uh, to make both motions tonight, or is one of them being held back until all the documents have been provided? Are we going to do this, uh, another time, uh, in next meeting, or what?
Uh, no, the two recommended motions tonight can happen tonight, um, the plan development agreement will just come back to you, um, at the next meeting. Um, once we get these approved documents, because these, these approved plans will then become part of the plan development agreement. We want to present it to you as a one-hundred percent complete, so you know exactly what it is that you're approving and signing.
Okay, so, based on that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and approve the, uh, second reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of South Lion, incorporated into the South Lion zoning ordinance by section one zero two dash one eighty-two, by rezoning the property parcel number twenty-one dash nineteen dash one twenty-six dash zero zero two. More fully described in the attached exhibit A as the property from RM1 District Multiple Family Residential to the PD District Planned Development.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote on that?
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Dill?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
And Peltier?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the plan development final, stage two, site plan for Fieldstone Site Condominiums parcel number twenty-one dash nineteen dash one twenty-six dash zero zero two, subject to one, approval and rezoning of parcel number twenty-one dash nineteen dash one twenty-six dash zero zero two, from multiple-family RM1 to Plan Development PD. Two, the plan development agreement, master deed and bylaws be approved and recorded by the city. And three, review approval and permits of all other applicable city consultants, departments, et cetera, including environment, Great Lakes and Energy, otherwise known as Eagle, uh, Department and Road Commission of Oakland County.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, by a nose, we'll give it to Councilmember Kibble, any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you again please lead us in a roll call vote?
Sure. Dill?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Walton?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Peltier?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you, Ms. McIntyre and everyone else for being here.
Thank you very much.
Old business number two, water and sewer rate adjustment.
Mr. Mayor, tonight, City of South Lion had a water and sewer rate analysis performed to ascertain the property, proper rate structure for the city. The recommendations were made at the main July city council meetings to adjust the rates to compensate for ten million dollars in improvements that are currently underway and planned within the next several years. If rates are adjusted, beginning with the next billing cycle, the customers, customers will be billed beginning April first and receive that bill April first at the new rates. I've attached materials tonight, a copy of the second presentation material that was provided by Plant Moran, and also a copy of the financial forecast, forecast for the funds. Possible courses of action tonight are approve or not approve the recommended changes in the water and rates, sewer rate structure for the upcoming years. Ryan Miller from Plant Moran is here tonight to go over, um, giving overview on what was done at the prior presentation, as well as give information on, uh, the rate structure and answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, uh, before I get started, I just want to apologize in case my internet goes on the fritz. This meeting's been blinking in and out, I tried getting out, getting back in, still did it, so if, uh, I'm talking and all of a sudden the sound goes out, I apologize, I should pop back in, I, I would assume. So with the materials in front of you, no, nothing has changed since the last time that I presented to you. Uh, we did finish the, and close out the model in the written report, uh, with option number three, and, and I will go through that in, in a bit. Uh, but it, just to remind everyone and folks maybe watching at home, uh, option three was, uh, a suggestion from the council, and it was about halfway between options one and two. Uh, so the original presentation provided, not necessarily polar opposites, but it was, uh, two, uh, two options that were, were fairly far apart on the impact that it would have to different classes of customers based on the size of their meters and the volume of water, uh, that they purchase. So option three kind of split the difference, went down the middle. Uh, and that's what we used to close out, uh, the model itself. Uh, there's a couple of things I would like to cover in the, uh, the PowerPoint. Uh, so let me, real quick. Okay, are you able to see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, uh, so, just as a reminder, the idea was that you have a, 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 uh, a funded system, you have, uh, approximately eight-point-eight million dollars in the bank as of when the model was, uh, first conducted. And the idea is that over a ten-year period, your level of cash is going to decrease while you do a lot of improvements, and then at some point start to increase again after the improvements have been completed. And at the end of ten years, you finish with the same amount of cash that you started the tenure cycle. But during that ten years, you have done a substantial amount of work, uh, of capital improvements, both the water and the sewer plant, uh, more going toward water. Um, a, and you're able to finance these internally. So because you've done a good job over the years of saving money and, and building a nest egg, you don't have to go out to bond or borrow money in order to, to do these improvements, all those improvements are, are self-funded, and that would save hundreds of thousands of dollars in potential interest expense if you had to borrow. Uh, so at the end of the ten years, like, as I said before, water and sewer are both made whole, and you end up where you start, which then sets you up very nicely for the next decade, because water lines aren't, uh, they don't last indefinitely, water plant doesn't last indefinitely. There's going to always be future improvements, future construction, future reconstruction that has to take place. And so theoretically, you'd be in the same position you are now, you'd be ready to take on the next decade worth of improvements and being able to finance those yourself. So, uh, this is the, the, the accounting nerdiness in me, just showing that the beginning of the model for water equals the end, that's the two-point-six million dollars that circled in both the upper left and lower right. We do the same thing in sewer, starting with six million, ending with six million. Combined, starting with eight-point-eight, ending it with eight-point-eight. Uh, so, in addition to the annual rate increase that the model, uh, suggests that you should do, uh, we also had a, uh, suggested a change in philosophy. So, uh, currently you do have a minimum bill and you have a modest meter charge. Uh, we would recommend replacing those both with an RTS, a readiness-to-serv charge. That readiness-to-serv charge, uh, is a fixed fee on every bill that pays for a portion of the city's overhead related to providing water and sewer service. So even if you don't turn on your faucet, there's still costs incurred with operating the system. And so that when you do turn on the faucet, water is there, it comes out. So whether you use a million gallons or you use zero, you still have to have your meter read, you still have to have a bill, the city still has insurance, it still has employees, uh, that provide the service. And so the RTS was going to provide a portion of that overhead, not all of it, not anywhere near. Uh, option three, uh, the way the model was set up was that option three would provide, uh, the RTS charged would provide eighteen percent of those overhead costs, uh, which is, which is fairly modest. Um, but when you switch to this RTS, which is a higher fixed number on every bill, um, depending on your volume, you're going to be affected differently. So a smaller bill might get hit harder, a larger bill might be hit less because the RTS, uh, i, is greater than what your fixed meter charge was. But at the same time, if you use less water and you're not getting hit with the minimum volume requirement, then you're going to have a compensated savings there. So somewhere in the middle, some people go up, some people are going to go down. But, so everyone gets treated differently in year one as the new philosophy takes hold. In years two through ten, everybody gets treated the same, the rate goes up as a percentage, and so everyone gets the same rate increase, uh, in future years. So here is a summary of the three options. Uh, the ten percent, twenty-five percent and eighteen percent recoupment of overhead costs through the RTS. Now, the RTS is also graduated based on the size of your meter. So a residential has the smallest, you know, a three-quarter inch or a one-inch meter, those pay a smaller charge than your industrial-sized four-inch meters. Uh, reason being is it takes more for the system to get ready to provide water to a large user, a large, uh, typically commercial user with those larger meters, and so they do pay a larger amount per quarter. Now, at the end of the day, at the end of ten years, we need the same amount of money, whether you do it with a hundred percent of an RTS or zero percent, whether you do eighteen or twenty-five or whatever. So, any change to that RTS, the difference then gets pushed over to the variable rate. Uh, over ten years, we're, we all pay the same, it's just what's the rate structure? How do we collect it? Do we collect it fixed? Do we collect it variable? Uh, but in the end, it's, it's all the same dollar amount. So option three was going to call for a, uh, an increase to the water per unit from two dollars and forty-six up to two dollars and sixty-eight, uh, cents per unit, that's a nine percent increase. For sewer is a three-and-a-half percent increase from four fifty-two a unit to four sixty-eight. Readiness to serve, uh, your old meter charge was six dollars a quarter, and under the, uh, the water and sewer having their own RTSs, uh, it would go up to, uh, twenty-three dollars and eighty-one cents per quarter. But again, if you only use one unit, you're only paying for one unit versus before, uh, I believe it was a, a seven-unit minimum. Uh, and so that would go away. Uh, the next couple of slides are just how it would impact the individual classes of customer, we had four samples. Uh, one was a, uh, a very low-end volume user, uh, presumably a couple. Uh, the second one is a family of four, um, much like my family with my, uh, my ten and eleven-year-old who like to take half-hour showers. These people are using a lot more water. Uh, and so because the rate increase goes up, they're paying a lot more near one than the low-volume user. Uh, the example three was a commercial with a two-inch meter and a high volume. And number four was also a two-inch meter but a low volume. So you can see here, customer four, first year is going to pay ten percent more, but in future years it's six percent. And going back to customer three, uh, six percent in year one, uh, because they're using less volume, but in future years, they're being treated the same as well. So this first year is kind of a resetting the water level, as it were. And so some people get affected more, some people get affected less as you make the change, and then going forward, everybody gets treated the same. Uh, so where we left off with next steps, so last time I spoke with you, we were going to finalize the So where we left off with next steps, so last time I spoke with you, we were going to finalize the model. We've done that. It's been provided to the city. It's been published. So now we're on step two. City council has to approve a rate increase. Up to you, at some point you're going to have to, and an implementation date. So my understanding is if it were to be passed soon, it would be in effect for the April 1 bills. And then as soon as council approves a rate increase, no pressure, then the city has to update the BSNA software so that it's ready in time to do those billings with the revised rate structure. That's all I had in terms of prepared comments. Does anyone have any questions?
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
If you, I don't know if you have the documents that we have in our agenda notes. But on page five, one of the things that I was kind of tripping up on was, it speaks to the idea that the new quarterly water rate, readiness rate. And then it talks about the new monthly sewer readiness rate.
So, good catch. I'm sorry, that is a, that is a tight ball. That is an excellent catch. It's quarterly. Your bills, the cycle of your bills is not changing.
I couldn't imagine that I wouldn't have recognized that if we had talked about that earlier, so.
I apologize. I'll have that.
I'm grateful for that. Yeah, that's, that is really helpful. And quite honestly, I think that this is a really the exact place that we need to be. So I'm all for this. Thank you though.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is more to Paul. I know we talked about this before, but do we have, how are we going to communicate this? I know that we've said, oh, we're talking about it here. We'll put it on the website. But is there some way that we can get ahead of this? Because it'll probably end up in the newspaper to talk about how, you know, that we're actually saving money by not having to go to bond. And, you know, just kind of give the, a little more of a positive spin to it.
Yes, I think the first avenue of expressing this is getting it out there on the next billing. You can put a note on there so people are going to be aware of that. You know, the social media, how we get at the website and that kind of thing. But printing out items so people can see them, having them posted at City Hall, getting people out there. I know the newspapers will want to do an article on this. They've discussed it several times. And I think we will have to try to explain that. And I think the one thing good about this is that we've had a good head start on a couple million-dollar project with that water tank out there. So people can actually see the dollars already at work. But, you know, providing some of those examples of how we save money by not having to go off a bond. And over a 10-year period, being able to save, you know, 15 to 20% on the total cost of that. Because we do have the funds instead of borrowing the money are some good examples. And I think you brought some other ones up at a meeting that we didn't in fact jot down.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I think Councilmember Doug brings up a good point. This is going to be in the paper before the, it goes out on the next bill to the residents. So I'd suggest you have your press release already formulated with that explanation. So when they ask for the story, we already have the explanation ready to go. Because it's not going to wait until the bills come out and people become aware of it. I mean, these people look at the minutes from the meetings, they're going to pick up on something like that and it's going to be on their website post haste, I'm pretty sure.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Is it possible to, if you're going to formulate, you know, your speaking points or whatever, to maybe even give them to us so that we can address those when they come up, because they will?
I don't know if it's going to be proper, easy to give it to seven people and everybody have seven different ways to reword my or our particular language. I would be willing to take obviously people's comments and I can try to incorporate those and obviously express them to everybody. I'd rather not, I wouldn't want to hold it up based upon two people liking this or wanting to change something. So we can definitely communicate with each other on this. Everybody is definitely aware and everybody can provide some input on that.
Oh, I wasn't really saying that we would have input on it. I meant if you could tell us what we, the best, what we should be saying when people ask us.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I apologize. Okay, yes.
Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Dill. We need talking points. I've asked before when we have social media posts, things like that, we need talking points. So I, I agree. I would love to see that.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I was just curious, the, it spoke to the idea of year one, year two. Are we going to start the year at fourth quarter or are we going to go five, five quarters to get into year two?
I'm not sure I understand what you're, what you're saying.
Well, there's an escalation annually that's going to take place. So are we going to start in the fourth quarter of '21 will end up being the new rate? We're going to start this.
Right. The first one will start, it'll begin with the December bill. So it'll be, it'll, the billing that starts December, so it'll be December, January, February. And then, so that will be number one. And then I would assume that we would redo it every single year, the increase after one year. So it would be after four quarters.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So the motion doesn't, doesn't say which, which selection or which option we're choosing. Do we need to incorporate that in the verbiage?
Yes, you do. You need to decide which one that it is.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the recommended changes in the water and sewer rates for the upcoming year using option three, the 18, however you want to refer to it, the 18% improvement model or increased model, rather. Well, that's device. Will that identify it properly?
Yes, it will.
I'll support.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to new business.
Could I just make a comment at the end of that lastly?
Certainly. Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I, I think that this is a really important thing that we're finally getting to attend to what our costs really need to be. Nobody ends up wanting to seem like, you know, we're trying to pick people's pockets. But none of this stuff is inexpensive. We need to be responsible. And I think that we've found a real sweet spot to land in with this, this rate structure. So we can accomplish the assets and improvements that we need to do without being really punitive on our residents and businesses. So I'm really grateful that this worked out the way that it did. We've, we've had this conversation through, I can't tell you how many different councils. And nobody was ever willing to actually throw down and make the move. So this is a really big step for us.
I'll, I'll speak to that briefly too. I, I think that that says a lot to the citizens. I think that says a lot to the team here that they realize that this needed to be addressed and it needed to be addressed immediately. So I want to thank Brian for coming back and breaking it all down again for us and, and taking the time to make sure we could understand the three different options we had here on the table. And yeah, comment carries a lot of weight there, Councilmember Kibble. Because I'm not calling you out for, for your age by any means, but you've, you've been involved with several councils here. So I appreciate that comment.
I'm a young coot.
All right. With that, we will now move on to new business this evening. Purchase to upgrade the electronic and controls for wellhouse number six and wellhouse number seven at McCady Park to improve communication and control the pumps at the wells from the SCADA equipment. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. The floor is yours, Doug.
Thank you. The current configuration right now for the pumps in the park, pump for well number six is currently controlled in a lead-lag configuration with the newly drilled well number seven. The current configuration needs to be modified. This was delayed by UIS, who is actually the company we use for all of our SCADA until the dedicated line for number seven was complete. As we all know, it is now complete. You run the new pump and the newly installed water line as part of our normal rotation of pumps. We would need to update both as the controls and power from number seven are ran from currently number well, well number six. This is a scheduled purchase from the year, from this year's budget. This expenditure can be purchased from capital improvement accounts, 592-556-970 for $12,475. I have some documentation I've included. It's not complete in what they're going to be doing. I kind of just summarized it and I can answer any question.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the, the motion to waive section 2-224 of the City of Southland Code of Ordinances, approval for purchases or contracts over $2,000. Competitive bidding for purchases or bidding over $5,000 because no advantage to the city will result from competitive bidding.
I'll support.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the electrical and controls upgrade to well number six and well number seven for the amount of $12,475, underlying item 592-556-970.
I'll support.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you again, please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Hellcat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. With that, we'll move on to the budget this evening. Does anyone have anything on the budget? All right, we'll move on to tonight's manager's report.
Let's just start with the proposed Holly Hills development. I advise council that we received a conditional rezoning application for the industrially, industrial zone property on Dixboro Road. They're requesting to conditionally rezone the property to residential. Development has more than 60 residential lots with additional green space. This is going to be coming for planning commission at their next meeting. The water tank installation work is still proceeding. The walls are up, the roof has been installed and they are working on interior and exterior of the tank. You can still visit the website to take a look at that as an up-to-minute reports on that. West Lake Street, we're reviewing proposals and inquiries that were submitted to develop the former side of the Slur Building. Our evaluation team has requested additional information from the interested parties to better determine who the best candidate for the site actually is. Advise counsel regarding a capital improvement plan. Now that the election is over, get back to work on putting together the capital improvement and purchases plan for the city. The department heads on the future purchases of equipment and vehicles and upgrading their facilities. The plan will contain sections for City Hall, downtown, police, fire, DPW, water and sewer, roads, parks and other city properties. I'll update you when I get better idea. The preliminary draft will be billed for City Council review. We've also provided information on the updated Niantic report, which was completed. Added appendix to the Gatsby 75 actuarial evaluation presentation that was included within your packet this evening. Staff is at the meeting regarding COVID preparation because ever-changing environment that's dealing with. As the chief mentioned, he has a meeting with the state tomorrow and staff will be meeting again shortly on that. And the last item I wanted to talk about is our city staff should be recognized for the exceptional job this year that they did with processing and ensuring everyone's constitutional rights were able to be exercised in both the August and November election. The clerk's office and everyone else that had, their works at City Hall were very hard to handle the infusion of hundreds of extra phone calls and visits by the public and the 200% increase in absentee ballot applications and subsequent ballots the city had. Our public safety staff provided added security at the polling stations. And our DPW, water, sewer and other individuals within the departments helped out with setup and take down of the equipment. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I know Lisa wanted to talk a little bit about, clerk wanted to talk a little bit about the election as well.
Right. And Lisa, I'm going to come right over to you, but before we head over there, did anyone have anything for Paul on that? Okay, great.
Just one question.
Councilman Richards, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah. Are we going to have the local in-city election results available this coming week? To the best of your knowledge?
I'll let Lisa address that.
Actually, the.
Oh, okay. All right.
Actually, all the results are on Oakland County's website. Although I do not know if they finished with the write-ins for the school board or not.
I was just going to say that Oakland County said they're not going to have it till Friday, the write-ins.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is it my turn?
Yeah, Clerk Deaton, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to say that the election was very busy and everybody worked really well together. Our turnout was 80% of all registered voters actually voted. In 2016, the turnout was only 70%. Of the 80%, 50% was by absentee ballot and the other 30% was in person voting. I just wanted to thank some people. Sorry, a little long-winded. I want to thank the Fire and Police Department for allowing us to again, use their trading room as our polling location. And again, thank you to the police department for maintaining a police presence at all the polling locations. Everyone really appreciated it. I also wanted to thank the DPW for assisting us with the setup and tear down of the equipment on election day. And of course, a huge thank you to all of our election inspectors. We could not do this without them. And I wanted to say Judy did a great job as usual. And I wanted to thank Carol, Patricia, Mary and Tara and all the staff at City Hall for helping out the last couple of months. We have a wonderful group of people that work great as a team. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Deaton. Could not agree with you anymore. Does anyone have anything for Clerk Deaton this evening?
Yes.
Councilman Richards, go ahead.
Lisa, I'm sure everyone's done a tremendous job in this and I'm so grateful we've got dedicated staff. Do you personally have any ballpark knowledge of an increase in cost to our city government, okay? And to run this election with a dramatic increase in our absentee ballots and mailings that we had to participate in. Any, any idea of, thank you.
I would have to look into that, Councilmember Richards. I can tell you that we had some extra inspectors that helped us with the in-office work leading up to the election day. Because me, Carol and Judy would never have been able to get out 5,000 absentee ballots. So there's going to be an increased cost in wages just because we had additional people working. But as for the envelopes, I'd have to look into that.
Well, and mailing costs too.
Pardon me?
And mailing costs as well, you know.
All right. Thank you very much for that update, City Clerk Deaton.
Just, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just as a point of clarification, the increase in mailing costs, I thought Oakland County was covering that.
No, we actually have envelopes that have a business return.
Okay.
We're on it. So we did have to purchase a lot of new envelopes.
Okay, thanks.
All right. At this time, we will move on to our second public comment. I had heard that we may have possibly State Rep-elect Kelly Breen here to speak for our second public comment.
Hello. Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. State Rep-elect Kelly Breen.
Hi, thank you guys so much for having me tonight. I am your State Rep-elect, but I hope you will also consider me a colleague. I am on Novi City Council. I'm absolutely passionate about local government. And I would like to echo a sentiment that was expressed earlier to. was expressed earlier to your local clerk and her entire department when it comes to this election. I'm very active with the Michigan Municipal League, especially on their Legislative Policy Committee for Municipal Services and Elections. And I know how hard it is that it has been on our local clerks and their departments for these new ways that people are voting. And please, please know that I've heard nothing but wonderful things. So to your clerk and her entire department, massive kudos to all the election workers with this unprecedented turnout. I mean, absolutely unprecedented. And it is a, it's been a great day, a great week, actually considering AV ballots went out a month beforehand, a great month for democracy. So thank you for everything that you have done. And I want you as a city council and I want the residents of South Lion to know that when it comes to these local issues, please consider me again an ally. When it comes to utility rates, increased costs for elections, communications with the public, I am acquainted with member Dilg and I've asked her to decimate my cell phone number to all you folks during this period of transition. And of course, when I officially take my post, it is from, always doesn't even wait till I take my post. It is an open door. If you need anything from me, you want to know where I stand, you want to know what I can do, come to me. I am absolutely passionate about local government, absolutely, and I want to be as resourceful as possible. My goal is to represent the entire district, not just Novi, but everybody, even the people who didn't vote for me. I'm here for all of you. So just a tiny bit of background, I've lived in this area pretty much my whole life, at least in the 38th district. I'm an attorney by trade. I can, I could probably make a lot more money as an attorney, but this is where my heart is. It's public service. So I got two little kids, my husband's an educator, my dad who's 74 years old is still teaching. My heart is here. My heart is with you guys and I want you to know also that normally I would be having regular town halls or coffee hours in person, but until we get this virus under control, if I can hold something outside in a socially distant manner, I will, but I've talked to our attorney general even about hosting a virtual town hall, especially on the effects of elections and voting and elder abuse. And we're going to all work together to be as resourceful as possible. I will be sending out regular updates and I hope, I really do honestly hope that I will receive invites to city functions and receive updates as to what's happening in your community. That's, that's basically all I'm here for today to say. I am very grateful and honored to serve the entire 38th district and please call me, contact me anytime. I, I love local government. I want to know what I can do to help. Everything from the unfunded mandates to the costs that are passed on to you guys and in turn the citizens, I'm here. Let me know what I can do to help. That's about it.
Thank you, State Rep-elect Kelly Breen. We appreciate that. Lisa, did we have anyone else out there for public comment this evening?
No, we did not.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our council comments this evening and Councilmember Dilg, why don't you get us started?
All right. It's been a long two weeks since our last meeting. Obviously, we had a lot going on with elections. I just want to talk a little bit about more local elections and congratulate some of our local elected officials and, you know, they really have an impact on South Lion. First, congratulations to our hometown county commissioner, Phil Whitebird. Happy to have the hardest rookie man in South Lion back to representing us in the county level. Congratulations and welcome to our new state house representative, Kelly Breen. I've known her for quite some time. She's got a great work ethic. I'm confident she'll make South Lion a priority and I think that's really important. She's really, she's done a good job of making sure she knows about South Lion issues and what we face here. Congratulations on reelection to the South Line Community School Board, to Tony Abate and Dan Schwigler, and welcome to Martin Leffrich. And welcome back and congratulations to everybody in Lion Township who retained their offices. And then finally, congrats on the reelection to our 11th District US Representative Haley Stevens, really happy to have her back. I was planning on giving a shout out, we've, everybody else has said this, but amazing shout out to Lisa Deaton, the office staff, the poll workers, the South Line Police. People were nervous about how this was going to go down. I told them that our city was going to do a great job and I was really glad to see that I was right. Our elections were orderly, calm, organized. Our, the staff stayed friendly and smiling. It was, it was a great day. On a different note, Halloween seems like it was ages ago, but like the police chief said, I thought it was great. People were positive, energetic, respectful, responsible, and it was great to see police out also just checking in on us all. So that was really, it was fun, it was good to see. I want to congratulate the Lion, the Lion Task Force for the, the award win, but I really, I, I'm working with South Lion, working with Lion Township was something I really wanted to do when I started running for city council, so I'm really happy I've been able to be on this task force. But I think that we really need to give an extra shout out to Tina Archer, the Lion Town, the Lion Township DDA Director, who's really worked hard from the beginning to make sure that she keeps all of the businesses informed and up to date and stays up to date on all the grants and making sure that they, that everybody's in the know. And a little quick shout out to Steve for going above and beyond to contact so many businesses and organizations and make everybody feel included, really appreciate that, since my day job precludes me from doing that sometimes. And then finally, I had the honor of being invited to a small business appreciation event at the Witch's Head Brewery with, and we got to welcome Governor Whitmer to, to, to South Lion. I was able to welcome her and give her some South Lion branded gifts that I got from the, from the grand trunk. And it was just really nice to see, to introduce her to South Lion, but also to have the Witch's Head get that kind of recognition. It was really great. So that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not going to go back through and list everybody, congratulations, because I think that we'll just, we'll be here all night if we keep doing that. So I, I echo all of those thoughts and I just want to remind people that the fall leaf collection continues until the weather no longer permits it. And according to the current schedule in calendar that is out on the website, it looks like we are allowing for pickup into December. Also, 11/11, add 11/11 on 11/11, we'll be having a Veterans Day service at the memorial. If you are able to come and pay tribute to your local veterans, we welcome you to join us. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kibble?
I don't know if anybody's been paying much attention, but the RCA building is really clicking right along. You're starting to see the bones of what's likely to end up being there and that, that's really exciting. There's an awful lot of stuff that goes on that seems mundane and, and uneventful that has to take place before you can start making things pretty. So they're, they're to that point now, so that's really helpful. The water tank is, as Paul had mentioned, that thing is just astonishing how quickly that apparatus has been put together. And for them to, to make all those components right on site is just staggeringly cool to me. I've been having a lot of fun watching that and we're going to end up having the benefit of yet another really big asset that we're paying for with our new rates and things. But, you know, it gives us the flexibility to be able to, to know that our water system has redundancy where we don't have to be concerned about things failing and, and not being able to have the capacity that we need to provide for our residents and businesses. So that's another really big, big step in the right direction. As Rose had mentioned, Veterans Day night or 11/11, it's always a great, I, I don't know how it's going to go down this year with COVID and all that stuff. I'm hoping everybody is as responsible as they can possibly be about that social distancing and all that stuff. But it's always a really meaningful event when you go there to see all these people that had provided us the freedoms that we enjoy and fought for that stuff. It's, it's really a, a really nice event to participate in. And I wanted to make mention that it's, it's really terrific to see Quanis getting ready to put the trees back in McCady Park. It's just, it, it really signals there is some normalcy that we can look forward to around here. So I'm really happy that they're, they're holding tough and going to have trees for everybody to be able to adorn their holidays with. So that's all I have. And the election people, I mean Lisa and them, it's just, was a Herculean effort and they came through with, without even blinking. I'm sure that they were titers could be, but they'd never really dwelled on that. They, they just did what they needed to do. So I'm really proud of all of them. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Richards?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go as fast as I can. I have five items. First of all, I would like to let everybody know that our number one leader in our historical group, Mr. Larry Ledbetter, is out and about and doing well after his surgery two weeks ago. And this weekend, he oversaw the improvements at the park in our historical plant. The lighting on the caboose, some painting, the lattice on the, around the base of the gazebo, stain was completed on the deck as an Eagle Scout project. Our garden has been pretty much wrapped up by the garden staff for winter. Lights were installed in the windows at the museum and our DPW is going to place the Christmas tree out front at a later date and we will install the lights at a later time. Sadly, no event like the Cool Yule is planned for the next month in December. Next, I want to refer to partially to my notes from October 12th that I didn't get in on the 28th. The British Swim Club over there on the plaza, I, I brought it up before, I just want to mention, I noticed that the, the concrete wasn't the same color as normal concrete dries to, okay? So I double checked on the matter and yes, they confirmed dye was added to the concrete in the pour and it's absolutely beautiful, okay? And I tried to find out who, who ordered it because they said we didn't do it. There's three levels of corporations involved in there and, but they never got back to me. I wasn't able to find out who ordered it, who paid for it or what it cost or anything. But I'm just letting you know, it looks beautiful. Thank you very much. Number three here, the Langdon Development, eight twenty-five West Lake Street. Okay, things are moving along. I'm not happy about some details, but that's for another time. Something needs to remind Mr. Langdon that you're supposed to put sidewalks in out to the corner of Dixborough. I don't know about down Dixborough, but there's no allowance been made at the approach in the curbing for the entrance at Ten Mile. Okay, next up, Marathon Gas Station, the real story to behold. This past week, the latest asphalt crack sealer and recoding was done last week, roof repair and trim applied to the front of the building. More news to come at another, at this location at a later time. Next year is the tentative completion date, as expected. Lastly, our VFW is all on the go for the memorial event on the 11th of this week, Wednesday. I talked to Jim Planke and he told me that the permits were filed with the police department two weeks ago and they are having the event at the traditional 11:00 PM. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy?
First off, in the interest of accuracy, I believe the event would take place at 11:00 AM, Councilmember Richards.
Oh, yeah.
Not 11:00 PM.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
At the risk of being a bit redundant, tonight I, I want to again recognize the efforts of our city staff, our volunteer poll workers, the South Line Police Department and our Department of Public Works for their efforts during the recent election. It truly was a team effort to ensure that everything went smoothly. So once again, thanks to everyone who helped make that possible. Second note, I've, I've had a couple of DPW crew members contact me regarding leaf collection in the city. So I want to remind residents that, you know, try to help the DPW help you. So as you rake your leaves to the street to be collected, remember to keep them tight to the curb to be collected. And if they happen to blow into the street, get a broom or rake and pull them back to the curb so that they can easily vacuum them with the equipment as they come through. Secondly, please remember to keep all branches and other materials out of the leaf piles. They will clog the equipment. And finally, do not cover the storm drains in the streets with your leaves. Keep them open and clear in order so that rainwater can be removed from the streets. That's all I have, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. I just can't not thank our city staff either on the, the incredible election. Everyone answered the bell. Police, fire, staff, volunteers, thank you. And thank you, Lisa, well, well deserved day off after the, the election, I, I would hope. But update from last week's high school football games. Unfortunately, South Line East with a great effort came up just short against Chelsea High School. In fact, the Cougars tipped the lead with about four minutes left, but weren't able to hold on. That would have been a pretty impressive upset. South Lion was able to knock off Wald Lake Western last week and they will advance to play North Farmington on Friday. So that's exciting that we still have a team left in the high school playoffs. I did want to comment on the Quanis trees going up lately, you know, the election's over, we can now fight about other things like when the holiday season starts. And the holiday season starts when the Quanis trees go up in the city of South Lion. So hopefully that'll help settle some family debates at that time. So, and really quick, we are coming up, the holidays are going to be here before we know it. You know, I've kind of taken a break on this, but as we're seeing these numbers of, of COVID come back up, we've got to be good to each other out there. It's tough, it's tough sliding, winter's coming, even though the weather's been great. You know, let's just, let's remember to try and be good to everyone out there because it's, it's a tough ride right now. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, have a great night all.